And thanks for being interested in the AB Tech Board. You wanted to just, so Matt and I, we've been buddies for a long time. I know things about Matt and he knows things about me, we can't talk about. But I know you guys have met. But Matt, why don't you just tell us a little bit about yourself or Robert, since you guys haven't met before, and a little bit about your background and your interest in the AB Tech Board, and then you might have a couple of questions.
Yeah, I think you probably know most of this, but I'll repeat myself. By the way, when I was running for commissioner and stuff, it's the hardest thing for me to do is to repeat myself. I just felt like, God, what a waste of time.
Over and over.
Over and over. But yeah, I'm a home builder and have been about 20 years, still mostly here in town. Served on lots of boards and commissions, which you can see from my application. Pretty diverse group of boards and commissions. Know a lot of folks in town. Have a master's degree from, Master of Public Administration from Western. Undergrads in Environmental Health from Western. I am interested in being on the AB Tech Board for a lot of reasons. I think that this have, of course, in sales tax, money for capital projects is something that, it'd be nice to somebody on the board to have some construction knowledge, but also just to be aware of the vernacular and what people are trying to get done and at what cost. So to me, boards should be accountability and transparency, things that, you know, when you deal with tax dollars, that's what you need. So I think that's the biggest reason I'd like to be on there as well, is I think that AB Tech is a huge asset in this community, especially for workforce training. I'd like to see more apprenticeships in the community, more partnerships with various entities, check a lot of contacts in a lot of different entities in town, to try to get kids involved and, you know, it goes back even when I have the school board, CTE route, when you're dealing with technical education. I think if you wait till a child gets out of high school and they're, you know, college age, to try to reach them, to see what they want to do when they grow up, it's kind of too late. I think it needs to happen earlier, and I think AB Tech can be instrumental in doing that. And I know they do some of that now, but I think that it's, it can always be explained. I think early as middle school, I think when you get a hold of the kids, and we know we're not going on the college track, as far as a four-year university, they need to learn a skill, I think. That'd be, be nice to see what they're doing in those regards. So that's it in a nutshell.
We hit it pretty close, Matt.
So Mike's on the board, trustee now, so he's kind of our current inside guy on there.
Has there been an eye open there?
Okay, courses and sales tax. People put in to affect, that would sunset it.
That's right.
Okay. They all, I think it's, they're not supposed to be no sun. The string is going to hold that sun forever.
That's it.
And some of them, you know, it's not going to go out. Soul pounds going to work good for a long time, really. But that's the one problem, and it's just like it's turned into a...
Pot of money they're not sure what to do with?
So many times.
A pot of money they're not sure what to do with?
Well, they know what to do with, they just, they just want to, they keep wanting to spend it. I'm not sure if they're going totally in the right direction. They need, the trustees, and being a trustee, the trustees need to be, as being a trustee, you know, you need, but they need more guidance of trustees. You know, we've got doctors, we've got bankers, we've got, old ones, some teachers, we've got another commission, which is great. I've heard, I don't know, because she's been a long time. And it's, it's a pretty new board itself. The main thing is just, everybody figuring out what's what, you know, getting to the president and saying, this is, this is what we, it's a board, like you've been on the board, it's a good board. The board determines, you know, they haven't asked you in the board, determine if you go top of the commission, you see, and any of that.
And part of the, part of the problem is that, and I think we're getting, we're starting to kind of get into it better now, but, you know, they, they're calling for, you know, for new buildings, and, but they're also calling for renovation of existing buildings, but they never really did a good assessment of the buildings they have. So they were talking about spending, you know, millions and millions of dollars, maybe 10, 20 million dollars, on like this Elm building, but then once we kind of started looking at it, it's like the building's totally shot, and it would make no sense to really fix it. But their whole plan was predicated on this new building plus fixing this other building, but they never really assessed what they got to get a good sense of, well, should we kind of fix some of what we have, or do we really need to replace it? So some of those kind of really basic questions are only now really starting to get, to get asked.
So I think, excuse me, man, contractor, square footage, what does that mean to you?
Just a number. It's what people perpetually throw out and say it to this much square foot, and they don't really know, they're just...
Well, no, but, okay, let me, let me rephrase that. You know, I tell them, okay, we're gonna, if we tear the one building down, we're gonna go on back the same size. And they said, well, you know, that's not going to do what the needs are. We've already added 220,000 square foot, that was there.
That includes the training center?
Well, training center's 40,000, so that, that's added into it. M lock came open, that ended at 37 more thousand square feet, which made people into, and all these places opened up, and L I D help, still got the fifth floor, they want to finish it in Alberton, too. So that's coming to us, too. But then they say, well, they gotta have more than this, you know, let's build 100,000 square foot instead of this, that's 70,000 square foot. And they say, well, the square footage don't matter. It don't matter. How can you put somebody in this room, say we gotta put 25 people in this room, we'll figure out how to get them in here, somehow. But my bill room's twice as big for 25 people.
So are they building it for expecting growth in enrollment, because they haven't had that, it's been really constant?
It went down.
It went down, that's right.
And that's what I mentioned yesterday, I said, we're building all this empty space, that I call, enrollment has gone down, AB Tech, this way. It hasn't went supposedly going 28, 38,000, we're causing quarters and a sap stack, we can do this, maybe it worked, it's gone down. We've gone down a couple of thousand.
It's assuming, probably to get workforce training.
Right, that's right.
And the L I Ds are more like they were back in 2008.
But what you said there is something about, I went and fought for Lamar and I fought for the education deal, and I could go out and fight for anybody in town, and I think Robert would, too. To put somebody out there at 15 years old, working at a celebrity's hot dog store, or wanting to be a mechanic, I, you know, I went to work at Harry's until 16, when he's up town, he's a mechanic, because I thought that's where I was wanting to be, and I ended up being a mechanic. So, you know, people, they gotta have some kind of options, and they do that in early college, and I think your daughter would have enjoyed it.
Yeah, we're looking at it from that.
Yeah, what I like, Matt, you said, is getting back to middle school and having a route you want to go, it may not be what you want to do.
Yeah.
But it could.
At least I'll tell you, you don't want to do that.
Yeah. And what, I, and I haven't been on here long enough to know, but, you know, I'm the type that asks a lot of questions about the AB Tech, you know, have not even been on the tour yet, but I've talked to a lot of people, and I think one thing you could bring to the table is a maintenance. From what I understand, the maintenance has created every one of these problems. Because several years back, they cut the maintenance budget.
But now, one more second on that. We cut the budget four years ago.
They cut the maintenance budget, you didn't cut it.
No, we cut it for two million a year, but somehow we ended up giving them 5.6 million over the last three years. So it actually hasn't been cut. But if you look at what the film that I looked at yesterday, with the water running everywhere, out of the, no, that couldn't have happened in four years, Robert.
No, this is, and I think that's where it'd be good, if we do build another building, or, it'd be good, how can we do it and maintain it? Nothing's made to look free to them. Whenever I build a house, I want brick, I want something that I don't have to paint for the next 50 years.
Well, it's, you know, it's, in the thorough ways society we have, which is another whole conversation, the Elm building, if I remember correctly, was built in about 1980, so it's not a real Elm building.
One set for 79, a quarter, and another for 86. Is that right around?
So, you know, it was, and the fact that now it's, it's not worth saving, that tells me that was a waste of money. Unfortunately, when you talk about engineering something that is going to last a long time, commercial contractors, and I say this because my father and grandfather is one of the all commercial contractors, but they're, they see dollars. And I think everybody has their hand in it beforehand, the engineers, and designers, and the architects, and everybody else, so the price tends to go way up, unfortunately. But I do think that there are things that, that could definitely be done, as far as material selection, that are a good product, but, and not cheap crap, but something that's going to last more than 40 years.
What is it, what is it, why that, that here?
Okay, make it quick, we've got more people on.
But I see what you're saying, Robert, the maintenance, to me, it's, you know, make it, do an assessment, this is what we've got, these are the buildings we have to maintain, this is how long they're supposed to last, the way we need to do to make them last. And I'm not sure they've done that.
Okay, you're a contractor, that is a lean tank.
Yeah.
How much is that?
All right, is it block with stucco?
I don't know, it's just, it's just, it's a little building, just, it's a little building phone, a little blue phone, we're stuck long.
Stucco, yeah.
With lemon, lemon, instead of wood, two of them.
Yeah, yeah. 10, 15,000, about.
That's 50.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
If it had brick on it, 70, too.
I know, I know, I'm dealing at the nature center right now, we're doing this, we just finally, because the work the board did, got, we broke ground in the damn new entrance. The final pricing that came in for that was about double what it should be. And everyone, people have to deal with city, so that must go its way up. Hey, how are you?
Good to see you.
Good too.
Sorry I'm late.
Midway.
About done.
He's been sat a lot of really smart soundings.
Sure, I'll show you the tape.
So, I have another question.
Sure.
Well, it's actually a two-parter, is that okay?
All right. Sure.
So...
Yes, the living.
In my opinion, AB Tech has an equity problem, and how, and there seems to be a view of whether there are going to be short-term certificate courses, and a push for that to address 18% unemployment in the African-American community for job skills, and like Nathan Ramsey has a great plan, and if people coordinated the two together, it'd be really, or there's a push for two-year degrees, so where do you come in with that? Does that make sense?
Yeah, you know, it's one of those double-edged swords. People want some kind of degree that somehow, in other people's eyes, might make them more marketable. And my, because I'm a primatist and a very, I like to think a rational person, I think that it's what you learn, and it might be what you learn in one course, that makes you more marketable. So I tend to go with the first thing, way of thinking, because, yes, might get an associate's degree and find art, that's not going to help them any more than if they took two courses in the beer industry and got a job at a college. So I tend to think that it's the better bang for your buck, the first route.
Okay.
Matt, thank you, good to see you.
Yeah, sure.
Big thanks to you.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll give her a hug.
Come on, get out, people, plug it out.
Take care.
Take care.
Good to see you.
Great.
Just try. Rest assured. Well, thank you for being with us, and thank you for your interest in serving on the AB Tech Board trustees. So if you could just take a minute, just tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in serving on the, on the board trustees, and then we'll probably have a couple of questions.
Okay. I was fortunate to do my career, teaching career in Bunca County. Spent 45 years as an educator in Bunca County, last 35 of it is principal at Black Mountain Primary. Education is part of it. Fact of the matter is, there is a big correlation between economics and education. And so AB Tech has always been part of the community, one way or the other. Everybody's associated with it. Not everybody's cut out to be in college, but everybody's cut out to be educated, some way or another. And that's why I like the idea of what goes on with AB Tech. I don't know any family that's not associated somewhere with AB Tech, with their friends, family, or whatever, it's been a part of this community, a vital part of it.
Sweet. Questions?
Now, I can tell you a whole lot more, but I found out, Debbie used to say this, he'd say, "Son, when it's time to say something, just stand up and say it, speak up to be heard, stand up to be seen, and then shout it, and you'd be appreciated."
Probably the last one should all...
We can learn a little better. You know, don't let your mother know you're today.
All of us.
Next day on the market.
So, what questions you guys have?
Go ahead, Rob.
In the bucket.
I was just telling one before you, I didn't get to go on the tour up there yet, but been talking to a lot of people. One of my big concerns there is, they're wanting more, but they're not maintaining what they've got right now. I think we need, I mean, Mike being on the board up there, I think it's brought up, in my four months here so far, I think, and I'm speaking out of turn here, maybe, I think what I have been told in four months, is a lot of it hadn't been told over the last three, four years, from what I understand, this has not been brought up that often. Is that kind of correct? And appreciate what Mike's doing, and need someone on there like a Mike, that is concerned about how much money we're actually spending there.
Well, after serving as principal 35 years, I handled the finances, I've learned this, you can get a lot for your money if you manage it correctly. And, and it takes common sense. Common sense is not very common anymore. Based on that, you have to ask questions. What, how much is this going to be, what's the benefit, what's the cost? Always count the cost. When a teacher would come to me with any idea, the first thing I'd always say is, how much is it going to cost, and where do you want to be with it? And, and from that, you have to weigh it. You do have to be transparent. People need to know exactly what's going on, they need to know the facts, and how, because this is public, I think this is with public schools, parents ought to have say, they want to know some.
Well, I've got a question, I mean, I know you're not serving on the, on the board now, and once you get in, you know, there, you always get a lot of work.
Excuse us for being late.
Hi, Gabriel.
Hey, good to see you.
Hi, Jasmine, good to see you.
So, but at a high level, do you have any thoughts about, you know, things, think, thinking about AB Tech, you know, just like super popular community, things that are, you know, holding really well there that we need to make sure we keep going well, and then what are things that need to be, you know, if we were underperforming, or not achieving the full potential, any high levels we're...
I think, I think you always have to look at it with visionary, not what's happening today, but what's going to happen down the road. When I coached Bob, I did that. You win the day, but you got a plan, what's happening out there tomorrow, and what's going to be happening in the next year. Same with finances. And the same with, with the programs. I think with the programs, you've got to, we have to look at the community and see what the community's needing. Where do we think the trend's going? How can we get there? The safest, the cheapest, and the most productive. Now, not serving on, on a board such as that, I do serve on Black Mountain Home for Children, and you see finances and see how it comes in, and how it goes out, and how you have to, have to handle it, I'm on the finance committee of that. And then, by the way, I'm going to put a plug in, it's a great organization. And then, if our school system were as effective with the kids as they are, there, we'd really be shouting the big train. Ask me anything you want to ask me, I'll, I'll tell you, if I don't know, I'll tell you I don't know.
So, so do you, do you have any, two things, one is, what do you think is, pardon me, one of the biggest advantages or the greatest thing about AB Tech? And then, secondly, what, what might concern you?
One of the things I think is, is good about AB Tech, we pushing school system, everybody needs a college degree. Not everybody does. And most of them, when they're 17 or 18, when I was that age, I graduated when I was 17, I had no idea what I was going to do. But I need to go somewhere to find out. AB Tech, and I tell folks, oh, I want to go to state, I want to go, why don't you go to AB Tech, a year or two and see, if that fits an educational plan for you, or do you find out, I don't need to be in college, I need to be with this, doing that? That, I think, is one of the things we did, and of course, we do this at public school, we don't want anybody to fail. It is American way, you choose to fail. We can give them every opportunity, some folks still choose to do that. That's why I think you have to keep up with it, with the changing time. In order to do that, you ask questions, all the time. What about this, what about that, just like you're doing. And, and what it does is it requires us to think on a different level. Just because you're there, you attend meetings and do this, but you, you need to speak up if it's something that concerns you, or you need to ask a question. And so I've, I've learned in school, let me tell you what I learned to be able to stay at Black Mountain 35 years as principal. I learned this, three things, you can be successful if you do this in administration. Number one, hire people smarter than you. That wasn't hard for me to do. Second part was harder, hold them accountable. Third part, stay out of the way and let them do the job. And that's kind of my philosophy.
So what concerns you about AB Tech? Is there any concerns, Mike?
Yeah, I keep hearing, we're spending a lot of money in, for buildings. And, and I was in a school that had 900 students, the school's still there with exception of a couple of trailers. You can manage with 500, 900, you've got to put your money where it's the most beneficial. And the most important thing that happened over at AB Tech is half the thing's good, it's the teacher-student relationship. All the other just, it's got, it's got to do that. And so I think that, that's the thing I hear. We need to know what the community needs, and be provided. Thank you.
Got time for one more?
In that vein, community needs, right now, unemployment is about 3, 4%, but in the African-American community, it's about 17 or 18. Do you have any particular ideas of what AB Tech could do to make that equity more even?
I think you do have to do this, and it's, it's a factor, if you have to go out to some and invite, you know, it's, it was my opinion in school, that Afro-American kids, sometimes if you feel downtrodden, some of the best kids I had just needed to be loved and talked to, try this, what are you going to do? We need to, it's going to take a culture shift, and that takes a while to do, but they've got, it's about, I still think, I still think, you get what you work for, and we need to teach them to work.
Say that again.
We get what we work for, so we need to be able to work.
Kind of play yourself out.
Yes, yes.
Can I bring one thing? I'm sorry, I, we were meeting. One of the concerns I have, and I live, I'm a neighbor of Bunca Tech, been since 1973, plus I was in Stevens Lee when the first kids in my class went to Bunca Tech, and that's a school in county that opened integrating from the beginning. But when I look at the campus today, and I walk over there some and all, I have a big concern, being an African-American taxpayer, not as a commissioner here, but as a taxpayer. When I look over there, I look at the staff, I look at the administration, and I look at the kids walking on campus, and I have a grandson over there, but he's got to be alone, because it's no African-Americans over there. And, you know, and sure, I know we have a small community, you know, when it comes to the African-American population, but we're nowhere near what we should be. I know, I, we've got some numbers in a meeting that I still question, because, you know, I go by what I see, not always what I read, and coming out black in America, you have to sometimes dig for yourself. But what do you propose be done over there to correct the situation? Now, mind you, it's not going to be done overnight, but damn, it's got to start sometime here.
Let me tell you what we did at Black Mountain Home for Children, when they, when they graduate, okay, you're really kind of an orphanage, now where are you going to go? We want to talk with everyone and say, what's your plans? What is your plan? If you'll stay here and go to AB Tech and get involved with that, we'll provide you a place to live another year or two, do you finish that? And we turn you out with some knowledge of what to do. I think you have to go out and, and, I know it's a Christian philosophy, but you go out, have to go out and bring them in, you really do. And convince them that they can do that. A lot of folks are just, they're just beat up on it, they just need somebody to say, no, you just, you need to give it a try and see what you get. I discovered kids are smarter than we give them credit for, and they know much more than we think they can. I learned when I taught, when I began teaching 7th grade, I was teaching earth science, had no idea what it was about. But I had one boy in the class that was with us. 7th grade, he knew all about rocks, and I ever thought about nothing. He taught my class for him, but I had to, and I wonder now what he is, he's probably a doctor somewhere around the... And he just needed that. He was heavy, he was chubby, nobody liked him, but all at once, he came, he was a customer. He's smart, and I think something like that.
So I've heard you say a couple times, you, you reach out to that community.
Yeah. And I agree with you. I think, for example, for example, why not visit the high schools? Why not visit the high school? Or require, we be in elementary, even high school, bring them on field trips over there and see what it is. A lot of folks are afraid of this till they see it.
Right.
You've got to see it. And I do think you ought to, that college ought to be cool, it ought to be cool.
Can I cut you off?
Oh, that's okay, yeah, take care. Good luck, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
We appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, take care.
See you, Matt.
See you, Rob. Jeff Latrop, Kelly, Commissioner.
How are you?
I'm really rough.
Hi, Jeff Latrop.
Hi. Nice to meet you.
Jeff Latrop.
Just a few minutes, but tell us a bit about your, just quickly, about your background and your interest in serving on the AB Tech Board, and then I'm sure there'll be a couple of questions.
Okay, great. So I'm, I'm very passionate about education. I recently moved to the Asheville area from the Raleigh Durham area in January, and in the Raleigh area, I was active in several educational components, as well as professional organizations. I'm director of the North Carolina Society of Human Resource Management, and it's a statewide, we'll work closely with the team here, and Western North Carolina HR Association, and helped put on the conference that they had here at the convention center. And that was one of the reasons why I moved here, loved the town, and had such a good experience that my partner and I decided to move here, so. I sit on the St. Leo University Regional Council up in Virginia Beach, done that for about three years, because we have quite a few business operations in that area, so it's a nice fit for me business-wise. I work closely with the Meredith College HR group and ECU group, so I'm, I'm passionate, like I said, passionate about education. Because I'm new to the area, I want to get involved, it's the, the way that I get to know the community and get to know people, and it's, it's what I did in Raleigh, and it worked well for me. So my business side, I, as I mentioned when we were walking in, I've, I've worked for a large organization, 100,000 employees, my recruiting team recruits about 80,000 people a year for us, it's a call center business, and we've got, the closest location to here is Greenville, South Carolina, but I've also got one in Greensboro, and Rocky Mount, and Jacksonville.
All right, great.
So that's me.
Very good. All right, questions?
Can you tell us more about your particular interest in serving the community college board, and the role you see the community college playing in the community?
Yeah. Yeah, it started early. When I was in college, I attended UNC Chapel Hill, and I was the Student Alumni Association President. And that came with a seat on the General Alumni Association Board. And so immediately throughout college, and then immediately afterwards, I was very active with alumni groups. I mentor a lot of students through my HR and recruitment connections. And it's just been a passion. In fact, Thursday, I'm leaving to fly up to the Ladoga to be a judge for a student HR case competition where they put on a presentation about HR topics. It's a case study. And I've done that the last six or seven years. So it's something that I enjoy doing. And HR and my business connections, it's a way for me to selfishly help myself and all of us because the more that we work with the younger people or people returning to work, because that's the hot thing in my profession now is there are a lot of aging workforce that are returning to work. So the more that we can partner and help develop them and work with them, the more that it benefits all of us. So I can see lots of partnerships working with the business community. I've already got a lot of, even though I'm new, because of my HR Association connections, I know a lot of the business community already. And it's a good way for me to potentially get some partnerships out there for whatever might be needed.
Have you applied for any other boards? You've only been here, you know, for a short period of time, you want to get involved?
Not really. They're, so my passions are fitness and education. So those are my, when I was in Raleigh, I was on the Wade County Commission Council on Fitness and Health. So I worked on that. I was appointed by the county commission and worked on that commission for two and a half years. So this year, they dissolved it because of, I moved away.
You wanted to be in here for a while?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, what's that? No, so those are my two passions outside of work. I do work a lot. My job is pretty demanding. So I'm pretty selective on the things that I do get involved in. So if I can find anything around, I take that back. There may have been something, I reached out to someone. It wasn't an actual application, but maybe to get involved with Parks and Rec. I'm a CrossFitter. I also have a nutrition certification and a Olympic weightlifting certification. So pretty, those are my hot things. That's what I like to do with my free time.
One of the questions that has come up in our conversations with AB Tech is ways they can be diversifying their faculty-staff pool. And I think they've, by their description, struggled with that, given that you work in HR. Do you have ideas about some specific strategies that you've seen to increase social diversity?
Yeah, I mean, I live and breathe that every day since I've been talent acquisition. So we, it's very important to have a diverse workforce, so utilizing diverse tools, different websites that, in fact, I just compiled one for one of the LGBT associations. They wanted a list of all the diversity sites that they could post jobs on. So I did compile the list of that that I've had over the years. In our organization, because we're large, we do have requirements for some professional roles that we present diverse slates. We've got to present whatever it might be. It might be that in that market, we're low on women, or it might be that we don't have enough African-American or whatever racial, whatever it might be. So there are lots of tools out there. I've tried to do it with our board, with the state council, to reach out to lots of different people to get involved and network with those different groups to bring in their connections so that the first HR Association meeting that I went to, I walked in and everyone was white and middle-aged. And I said, well, here's an opportunity for us. We can diversify for age, gender, because it was mostly female. There was not LGBT presence, there were not any minorities. So slowly worked and networked within groups. There are lots of associations out there where you can make some really good connections. There's a Black HR Association, and so made some connections with some of their leaders and said, hey, let's partner on some things. And then that brought more people into our organization. So I think between the different sites that are available and then partnerships with organizations, you can start to diversify your talent pool.
Good question. So there's, as you, we have read about in the paper, some, you know, a lot of what we've been wrestling with lately is a lot of building projects on the campus. And, you know, I think, you know, we all love AB Tech, but I think there's been a sense that like their campus plan has been kind of disorganized, just frankly not as well thought through as it needs to be. So do you have any, any kind of comments you'd like to share just about, you know, what needs to happen to make sure they come up with like a really good plan, are taking care of what they got? If there is a need for new buildings, what should that look like? How you justify it? And also just I think within the square footage they have, I think there's questions about are they, are they really programming it right? Because, I mean, do you really need that new building? If you do, I mean, of course it will help you, but are you using the space you have now effectively?
Yeah, I think, I'm a planner, so I like, the first thing that I did when I took over the director of the state council for the term group was a strategic plan because we didn't have one. Now, we don't have buildings, but I think that it would be important to bring together all the various people that would need to make those decisions. So I'm not an expert in building or any of that regarding building and construction. But I also grew up in the Chapel Hill area, went to school there, I saw how things have been I don't know if any of you guys have been there recently, but it's gone pretty crazy, probably pretty similar. So I think bringing in the right players to discuss, plan ahead, come up with a strategic plan for how, and pulling you guys in obviously, for how you envision it looking. I think all the right players, having those conversations will help come up with that plan. Like I said, I'm not a construction expert. I know what I like, I know, there are a lot of things that I would push for, things like pedestrian friendly. I'm a proponent in green, so where we can use that construction that's energy efficient and doesn't kill the environment. So all those things are important to me. But again, you've got to make it make sense. If the, like I think you mentioned, if they need a location, then let's bring the parties together and make it work.
Any more? That time for me, one more? All right. Well, hey, Jeff, thanks so much for coming today.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. Thank you. Welcome to the area also.
Thank you. I think I got everybody right.
Have a good afternoon.
Jeff Latrell, good to see you.
Good to see you.
How are you? Good to see you.
How's it going for that?
Been a long time.
Yeah, I see you again, see you.
Yeah, a long time.
I'm at the site, so I don't get to talk to you.
Yeah, that's right. You across the way over there, yeah.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Yeah, that's for sure. When I see you, I think of boys.
Yeah, boy, that was nineteen eighties, maybe even seventy-nine.
Yeah, I still have battle scars. We all did.
It was a long time ago. Over that schoolway over there.
What was that, I've forgotten the name of it, Rankin, that they closed, that was when it was in Rankin School, yeah. They tore the building down, I mean, by Pittsburgh Apartments.
Yeah.
Why did they tear it down?
It should have been torn down twenty years before they did.
Well, Dave, thanks for being with us.
Thanks for having me.
So we served, we used to be on the airport board together, so it sounds like some of you guys know Dave, maybe others. So why don't you tell us a little bit about your background and just, mostly, you know, what your interest in serving on the AB Tech Board? And I'm sure we'll have.
I certainly hope so. Well, I'm Dave Villar, I'm a bankruptcy lawyer here in Asheville. Not because I planned it that way, but just that's kind of how things evolved over a period of time. I've always enjoyed working on boards and directors, as Al has referred to. He and I were on the Boys Club, which then became the Boys and Girls Club way back in the early eighties. I was on the Big Brothers and Sisters Board, Nashville Civil, so it adds on to my resume there. I've really enjoyed my board work. I think it complements, you know, the work I do as an attorney. And I think I bring to any board, but in particular the AB Tech Board, an ability to synthesize complex issues and work towards consensus among a group of diverse people, which the airport board was certainly that. And I really do enjoy it. I feel, you know, partly civic duty, but partly I really feel like my skills are aligned with service on board directors. Complexities and working together, those are two things that fit my good needs. And I think I would say too, that two of the most, well, two of the, I guess, most prominent boards I've served on was the Asheville City Board of Education back from eighty-seven to ninety-five. I remember some of that too, which I was chairman for six years. And then education, when I first got on that board, I thought, you know, that I could solve all the education problems in the world, and I soon learned that it's like pushing an elephant. But we did desegregate the schools and reorganize the schools during my tenure. And then my more recent service on the airport board, it surprised me somewhat because it was much more business oriented than I thought it would be. But AB Tech strikes me as sort of a nice combination between educational piece and the commercial business component of service to the community in that regard. So that's why I was attracted to this board. It seemed like it was a good fit for my skill set.
Excellent. Questions? So you heard, I have two parts of this. One is, what do you, based on your, what do you think is one of the biggest advantages, effects, or one of their attributes, or something that stands out to you? And the second, what concerns you?
I think AB Tech is an extremely valuable resource for our community. It certainly has a good reputation. And I've been impressed with the ability it has to respond quickly to community needs. I know Lynn Amara came here and they had the need for new machines, and AB Tech quickly provided the service. And then in the airport, one of my last meetings was, we had a meeting with the AB Tech people to do a, to coordinate with the pilots program. And then, of course, the brewing stuff here, which everyone knows about, is another aspect of AB Tech's responsiveness to community needs. I think going forward, one of the biggest things that AB Tech needs to do is maintain that image without, and sometimes unpleasant publicity is impossible to avoid, but certainly it had some with the, not one, but two unsuccessful leaders. And I think one of the most important things is to keep the positive momentum and make sure that there is a appropriate mechanism in place to choose an appropriate leader without your finger tied. It's kind of something that he needs to settle or something.
What's one bold idea you have that AB Tech could bring to the community?
You know, I'm not necessarily a bold person, I'm more of a
What a temper idea you have.
Step-by-step person, but just, you know, responding intuitively to your question, I think perhaps an increase in public relations and making sure people in the community know exactly what AB Tech does. Not only in newspapers and social media, but you know, maybe more community outreach would be something that might be positive, I think would be positive, but it might solidify some of the factors I've already mentioned about keeping it moving and making sure people know, know what AB Tech's all about because lots of times they did really good things and people go out and get a job and that's the end of the story. People don't really know that AB Tech was a team of part of that.
I think a very point, you know, just doing the, doing the walk around their UNO, and I looked here, you know, wandered out and kind of like I think of myself in the loop. There's all kinds of cool stuff going on that I have no idea.
Well, the campus, I mean, the campus is very, very impressive.
I'm a trustee and I can't be quiet in this whole process.
That's okay.
It's a Lynn Amara deal, I worked very hard for that because they didn't want wooden bushers. They want, they want people with certificates, you know, they needed mechanics. So I worked hard to try to get that done. And the pilot deal, I said, that deal for ground school with the UNC.
Well, I think that, you know,
All that stuff works together.
All that aspects of the community.
But there's a lot of stuff going on with buildings and the process and the money and the course and stuff, actually, right now. It's not good.
Well, I know, all I know is what I've written in the papers, but you know, I think I have abilities to work through those kind of things and work to a conclusion.
All right, well.
You know, one of the problems that you wrestle with and I wrestle with, two and eight years on the school board, is the achievement gap. But when you hit the Buckham Tech, it's not the achievement gap. It's just my concern is just the lack of diversity period. You know, they don't have the staff, they don't have the student body or anything. And finally, they're getting some of the trustees value. But my question though is this, what do you bring to the table that would help start, at least start, to remedy that situation?
Well, if people of our ilk remember the desegregation, I think my reputation in that connection with the Asheville City Schools certainly moved in that direction. Our law firm had the first African-American law partner in Asheville. So there's a long string of things. I haven't studied the specific problem that you addressed, reference, you know, diversity across the boards. So I'd have to defer any specific things, but I think my integrity and my history would stand me well on that issue.
Jimmy, you mentioned in your notes, you know, Dr. King will retire, you know, at some point, what plans are exactly. But in terms of, in terms of, you know, recruiting a really strong, effective person to take up the reins after that, any thoughts on, you know, what needs to be done? Because there have been a couple of people who've come through and just, you know, it just didn't work out, you know, and so what are your thoughts on that?
You know, on the airport board and the school board both, we've had successful selection processes, and they were, they were different. On the airport, we chose the second in command with some dissension. And Yeah.
I get the idea.
I thought you were saying or something. But see, that's an example of how we can disagree without being disagreeable. I guess I thought there was. I remember that specifically. It was a healthy discussion. And I thought really that, you know, if we'd gone the other way, it would have been a unsuccessful outcome as well. On the school board, I was part of one major superintendent search that didn't work out so well, and now I'm part of another one that also didn't work out so well. So it is, it is a challenging problem. I think one of the things that, one of the baseline decisions is, do you hire consultants from outside or do you try to do it internally? I think probably a blend of the two is the best. I'm not real comfortable with saying, okay, you guys find somebody and we'll hire them. But I do think having an outfit that can, you know, canvas the waterfront and do some screening, I really feel like the board is ultimately responsible. I really feel like the board is ultimately responsible for the decision. And if it doesn't work out, I think the board has to step up and say, look, we made a mistake.
Right.
And try again, which I, it has experience.
Very good. Any other questions?
No, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, thank you.
All right, Mr. Villiar?
Okay, thank you.
Great to see you. Thank you for being willing to.
Okay. Keep your, keep your energy.
Good to see you. Thanks very much.
Good to see you. Thank you, actually.
All right, today.
So we're going to.